9:00 PM. Thanks for going ahead and receiving our regular scheduled 5 PM D R. So this is hereby given by regular meeting with board members of the district on 135 Oklahoma Court in Texas on August 12th, 2020, the hour 5:30 PM from experience to the position below. So it's supposed to be office for the district on August 7th, 24th, and the street end, according to Texas Open Meetings Act, except for 5510, 415510. That was the two hours required, I think, that the, uh, we already called the, uh, forum and already determined that the, like, what we're requiring. Uh, President Ward, we have, uh, November Houston, myself, and I have a couple, on two, we have after along, and basically it's time to move five, four, four, no, uh, this item two, but we just have cases already done. We'll belong to item three, meditation of the audience, of all the comments, staff, or?
I got a comment, Scott, if you guys don't mind.
Yes.
Um, I remember we had that meeting with, uh, Brian, and he sort of went over the times where as board members, we're supposed to be interacting with the staff, and I take that to heart pretty well, so I try not to, to be over there, uh, interacting outside of my board duties, so I wanted to share with everybody that I did talk to Carlos this morning, uh, in a conversation, and I always feel like as a board member, if I talk to them, I want to sort of share that. Uh, my conversation was about the budget committee meeting that we just had, uh, that, that, I'm sorry, Alex and I had earlier this week, and I, I'm pressed on Carlos, and, and as we get into, you know, the budget committee meeting next time, or the workshop, uh, he, we had looked at four, adding four employees, and four employees, there's a lot of employees to add, uh, so around one hundred and thirty to one hundred and fifty thousand dollars in cost, and I just would like to remind Carlos and everybody that that's six hundred and forty man-hours a month, so four people times forty hours a week, times four a week is six hundred and forty hours, uh, and I think that really has to be substantiated. I mean, somebody's got to make it crystal clear to us that we need to actually add six hundred and forty man-hours to what we're doing. Uh, you know, we brought in a hundred and twenty new accounts, why we need six hundred and forty new man-hours to man all those accounts for something that's been working for a long time? There might be good reasons, uh, but they got to be spelled out real clear in order for us to commit to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year ongoing expenses. Uh, that's a big, big ask. Uh, to me, I'd rather spend the money on capital outlays, uh, on buying new equipment than I would adding on employees, so for me, that's, that's a big thing for everybody to consider, how, do we really need that six hundred and forty man-hours a month to what we're doing? Uh, that's it, so just, just an overall comment that as we go into our next meeting, I'd love to hear more about it if that's really what the intent is. Thanks, guys.
Well, any other comments? Let's go along to item four, considering discussing more, uh, possible approval in a few minutes in regular meetings, like, one second, one minute. Second. Five, general managers report.
You can see that, uh, confirms some data that I, uh, put in the attachments there, I think it's, uh, it's not correct, right? Uh, bracketed with the orange, if you see the blue line, uh, excuse me, the blue line in the bottom, seven, six, the July report, and then the eight is the orange line, and the numbers up, up on top were yellow, it was supposed to be blue with a smaller number and, uh, and the orange with a high number, it was just opposite, it wasn't clear until today, we directed.
I currently have thirty-seven, basically I have seventy-five staff, five Joel tested thirty-seven, I've got a lot of my.
The ones that tested negative, see the top part, which is, uh, tested?
All the staff that were tested, or?
No, only those that have, uh, shown some sign of, of, or symptoms.
Right, so, we've tested that many, uh, in, uh, thirty-five in, in, uh, I got the correct, thirty-five in July, and then, uh, this month is, uh, tested thirty-seven, so that's a little bit more, couple more. Then, uh, on the negative, uh, we have, uh, nineteen that tested negative, and then nineteen, uh, for, for August, up to August the sixth, nineteen also, so then we keep going with the positive, and we have, uh, July eight, and then, uh, up to August, uh, the sixth would be ten, and then you keep going, it'll be fire pending, the work pending in, in July, and now one. So we covered, we have three in July, and then, uh, August, uh, that's ended, so we've been handling the, I guess, COVID with a lot of caution, and emphasizing, and even myself, I, I guided with, even emphasizing to everybody else that, you know, careful this and that, somehow like that, so I'm cleared now, and, uh, I just want to say that, that everybody else is clear, and has done a good job in, at home, staying at home, uh, quarantine, and, and making sure that you wore your mask, which I had on you, but I mucked one o'clock, I just took a while, requested to think about, but, uh, washing your hands, you know, and, and making sure that, uh, separation, as you see here, uh, six feet apart, and, uh, we've been doing that with employees also, so everything will be trying our best to contain that COVID nineteen and, uh, get rid of it, so I'll, I'll sue you if that happened, but, uh, we just keep doing what we have to do. And, uh, the next one that I have here, that's on the COVID, uh, is the, uh, remove water advertisement at Walmart, that came along that you had requested for us, and then we didn't, pushes to get it removed, that's how you move, but that's to no avail, the management there had told us, and the upper management, up at the higher levels, said no, because that's, uh, that's a federal advertisement, the whole industry advertises that, and, uh, only thing that we've been trying to do is call and complain to the main company at Walmart, which, uh, I believe, uh, we just keep going, and see, and see what happens after that, but that's the report on that, we're trying to do our best to get it removed, but we just can't.
Well, if we, if we care enough, I guess we could have Brian send him a letter, sort of leave that at the will of the other, the other board members, it's, it's sort of disrespectful, I think, the picture, but I don't know if it's worth Brian sending a two hundred and fifty dollar letter or not.
I don't see why, I, it would be worth trying, you know, we're trying everything else, as a national court. So, it's not fair for the order entities or the cities that provide the services, but anyhow, we'll do our best to see pushing for that, see what happens, uh, sooner or later. Uh, any questions on that? So then, the next one is the elections, and more than we've, uh, mentioned, that, uh, next week, the seventeenth is the deadline for any applicants, and, uh, we've had, uh, seven that picked up the applications, and two that were brought back, uh, they still two been nursing and brought them back, and we're still plenty more, uh, to be, uh, brought back to our office. And just keep in mind that, uh, next Monday, at 5:00 PM is the deadline for, for the package, seven, seven packets, and only two returned back to the, to the town. Okay, now, any questions on that?
Do they know it doesn't pay?
Oh, after I came back from my, uh, COVID recovery, I lost one of my hearing sites, my left ear, it was like ringing, I thought it was, uh, some kind of sinus, uh, allergy, but, so, I'm still trying to, uh, pay attention to my left ear, but anyhow, uh, the next , uh, item here is, uh, American Water Board of Directors Association Conference that was, uh, for office, we canceled that, we recovered all the funds back, uh, because it was not, uh, zooming is not, uh, not as good as, as being there present, so we recovered all, our funding back and, uh, canceled our site. So, maybe, you know, but everything comes back to, we'll go back to the regular conferences. Then, uh, I have a lovely from Brad X from social media, and I couldn't, I'm managing it because, fortunately, you know, it's a break here.
Good evening, Chairman and Board and Staff, my name is Victor August, and I'm through with my W Y P here. We have a short presentation, PowerPoint presentation on, uh, statistics and analysis that, that we've gotten so far. The one thing that we have been working on is trying to figure out ways to get to the general public, because a lot of these committees and boards that are out there are no longer meeting, they're doing Zoom meetings and, 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 and other ways, so.
Can we hold off just a second?
Sure.
Troy, uh, Troy wanted, uh, yeah, a public comment. Oh, if I pass, yeah, you want to go, uh, you have a public comment, I'm sure.
Bring you some good news, a lot of fun, today. Yeah, we had a little bit of experience, uh, with the water department, and, uh, we had over at 2:33, our dean is straight there with some complaints that people weren't using the Water Smart program, or Smart Water, or Water Smart, whatever it is, I could turn it on today, and it's pretty cool, but anyway, so I called over here, eight fifteen sharp, and met with Denise on the phone, uh, absolutely incredible, give her a raise. She knew what was going on, she knew what I wanted, and then I started repeating myself like I always do, she says, hey, I can get this thing moving quicker, to get this, let me do my job, so I shut up, and next thing I know, there's Ruth Cullen from Customer Service Dispatch, and says, Omar is going to be over there in about fifteen minutes, so he'll be glad to meet you, because I wanted to meet him over right there, we're having some serious water problems. Then, um, so, anyway, I finally took a quick shower and got over there fast, and, and Omar's had already gone through, I, I even told Ruth how to get him in the side gate with his little screwdriver, and he was on it, everybody was on it, everybody was blessed, everybody was happy, everybody liked working for this outfit, and, anyway, we found out he even went, Omar went overboard with his helping out, we, we had a, thought we may have had a water breakout, but, uh, got, had to, had that dock away, and you can see the pipes and the conduit of the electricity and the water out there, and, sure enough, backtracked it, we got down there, and started lifting up this five-inch water hose, and all of a sudden, we had a stream of water going out, that water bill was going nuts, and he had told me earlier that he had kind of walked around, got into the K O K, and went down there in the shore, got the water, uh, some water going out, but nothing like that, because it was going into the, into the bay there, and we found a, you know, a, float automatic filler on the pool, uh, we kind of turned that off, and went and checked back in the back where, where the, uh, back flows were, uh, valves and such, and so I ended up turning off the electricity there, turned off the water at the meter, and, uh, and here comes Mr. Lopez, and I found out later that Mr. Lopez is, his daddy was Kika, that ended a long time ago, and, but anyway, it was great, thumbs up, give him a raise, all of them, outstanding.
Very nice of you to take your time and energy and effort, and share that we want to get positive, it means a lot, and we certainly are a veteran neighborhood, and know, know a lot of people, things, we respect, value, and appreciate each other.
Good people, some way you need to sell this Water Smart business.
Good.
Thanks for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Troy, yeah, nice gesture. Could I make the recommendation, could we go ahead and discuss the next item, Water Smart, how to get promoted? No, no, before we come back to the water, uh, the PR, or, we want to feel on the body. They were going to make the presentation on the PR water, so I'm suggesting, go ahead and talk about the bond issue next to the item, see if there are presentations, yes, it's, uh, come forward. Yes, if you don't mind, okay, just one, one. So at this time, uh, we're moving out of item five, and we are asking to move to item six, but we want to go to, please.
Can you skip item four?
You can skip item four. No, we, we, yes, we did, uh, first and Alex second. At this time, uh, we're going to skip forward to item six, discussing approval and order calling the bond elections for the Minnesota water district, and letting provisions for conducting special election and other provisions incidental and related to the, the, I'm visiting, unless you can, if I could go ahead, we'll get into that. After giving considerable amount of thought to this, and being, and I've always been wanting to go ahead with this, about the presentation, I find myself having doubts as to, uh, the wisdom of having this election, with the COVID, and the atmosphere out there in the community, I, I, I just have a sense that this is not the time to go and ask money, I know, yeah, I know we've been having to bump their property rates up quite a bit, and, uh, I worry about it, the thing I'm worried about more than anything else is that we don't have the ability to really go out in the community and sell this thing, I mean, last week, we were going to all the changers, the workers' meetings, the school board meetings, we were, but we got to do it all again, but we can't do it now, so the fact that we can't do it now, I think we're sort of shooting ourselves in the foot by pushing it forward at this time, and the third thing that sort of leads me to the thought that we could postpone this thing, is that we've got the money to work on the clarifier, want to do that, and with that clarifier and the use of the chlorine dioxide, we will have water plant number one in a position where if need be, in an emergency, we can put it online, so my thought is, I would like to see this bond postponed until next May, hopefully by that time, the COVID situation will be screwed out in the spring, then we can go back and make the presentations, see whenever we need to make it, and go forward, but, but I just, at this point in time, I'm not comfortable, I don't have a good feel that it will pass, so, just to start the discussion, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we delay implementation and calling this on the, that, that motion has been made for, uh, I think we should all, I guess we can't all, but maybe discuss whether I call it from Alex.
We need a second before we do that.
Delay, is there a second, or is there any other?
I'll, I'll second that for the purpose of discussion, um, I know that we have, uh, we, well, I can speak for myself, we, we have a ton of time and energy invested in this, um, I'm not sure public sentiment is going to be any different, or COVID is going to be a different, um, in, uh, next May, uh, but I understand what you're saying, and, uh, it's, I, I don't know, my, my, my thought is that we're, we're probably, the district is probably, financially, I know it's in the best position it's ever been to do this project, but, um, I know that nobody wants their taxes raised, and there is never a good time to do that, so, having said that, if that's the intent, and if that's what, oh, the direction the board wants to take, then I would suggest that we come up with a plan to try to change that public sentiment in the next few months, if that's what we're going to do, because without that, then all we're doing is postponing the inevitable, the inevitable being that we're going to fix this plant one way, shape, and form, we need to, that's not a question, uh, so we have to do that, um, if we do postpone, I want to make sure that every component that's put into this plant in, in the interim is something that's going to accomplish what we want to accomplish with the bond itself, with doing the plant the way we want to do it, I, I want to make sure we do that, so, because I know there's going to be expenditures such as a clarifier moving forward, so I want to make sure that whatever we do, uh, it is geared towards accomplishing the end result, which is the plant upgrade that we want, the microfiltration system, uh, because I don't want to invest any money into it and then find out later that we have to tear that out because it doesn't fit what we want it to accomplish, so I want to make sure we accomplish that, uh, if that's what the board wants to do, uh, but I think it's very important that if the intent here is to try to, uh, number one, just be easy for now on, on, uh, on our voters, uh, then I can understand that, because it is a very difficult time, and I know that, uh, some people are really hurting, especially businesses, which we rely very heavily on, so, um, that's, that's my take on it, I, I'm happy to hear from the other board members to see how they feel about it, but if we, we do need to come up with a plan to, to address it in May, uh, whatever the situation of COVID might be, uh, and we'll see where we're, where we're at then.
I'd like to weigh in as well, can you guys hear me okay?
Yep.
That changes, let me know, um, I too am concerned about, you know, our taxpayers and, and the community, and the burden that this, you know, unprecedented time has posed upon all of us, but I also recognize the efforts on behalf of many that has helped us all recognize needs that we have, so it's, it's a delicate topic, one that needs to be discussed, my first question is, what's the deadline for us to make such a decision of postponement or to move forward?
Today?
Yeah, August seventeenth, I believe it's.
Today? So it's today?
It's filing deadlines, they're filing deadlines.
Okay, so, um, you know, because my follow-up question is, you know, we have a, we have a, a, a board of contingencies from the, you know, of constituents from the community that we hand-selected, you know, I'd love to have their opinion, you know, because they were actually the representation of the population, they were the ones that were tasked with the responsibility to help inform the voters in our community, because, you know, I don't take the position of selling this to anyone, I take the position of educating everyone what we're asking for, what it's going to cost them, and what they're going to get for that money, and then let our community make an informed decision on Election Day. Now, that being said, I really don't have a problem moving this to May, but if we move it, let's make sure that's our goal, is just to educate the communities so they can make an informed decision, know exactly what it's going to cost them and what they're going to get for their money, that should always be our approach, I mean, I, I'm obviously in favor of, of these improvements, I believe that we've done our due diligence not to waste any of our taxpayers' money, but I, I agree with, you know, my colleague, Mr. Houston, I, I, I don't know if November's the right time to, to make that ass, so, um, that's all I have to say, thank you.
Uh, I think that it, it bears some discussion of the fact that as a board, we've been a board, this board has existed for two years, and, uh, we've, this has been our prime project, right, working on this bond issue, uh, this board might not exist in May, we don't know what the future holds, the voter's going to have a choice, three of you guys are up for reelection, so I would hate to see our work of two years, uh, go by the wayside and, and sort of start over from square one, I mean, heck, I, I don't know what, uh, what the intention is of, of Mr. Houston, Mr. Avalos, Mr. Friedman, and I have discussed that he wants to be back in the chairman's chair, but, you know, that's, uh, there's been a lot of effort put into it, and quite frankly, I, I don't, I'd be a little disappointed if our little Congress here, our board of five, wasn't able to get this passed, maybe we'll all be together again for, for two more years, or, or maybe we won't, and, and that just puts a big risk in the program, uh, about what could happen going forward.
There's, I, I, I agree with Mr. Lalan, uh, and that's precisely the reason that I struggle with this, because the last thing I want is somebody to take over for the work that I've done that has never even come to a meeting, so I agree with you in that, in that respect, and that is why I'm going to run for this position again, you know, so I agree with that, yeah, I totally understand what you're saying, I don't want anybody else to take over, I want to see this through.
Great, well, we, you know, there's guys who wanted to see things through two years ago who aren't there right now either, so I think we just have to give some thought to the fact that.
They dropped out.
I think we, we need to give, give a little bit of thought to the fact that, you know, giving up on this, now postponing it runs the risk of postponing it well past May, uh, that could happen.
You're delaying the project for a year, you're delaying something that needs to be done, that's, that's a fact, it needs to be done, uh, everyone's committed to getting it, I'm not trying to get knocked out, go on.
No, go ahead, Scott, I'd love to know your thoughts on.
The projects need to be done, that's a fact, the running, the running needs to be done, but the question is, how do people feel about adding taxation to future, the future property, the future value, what's going to happen? Uh, all of the municipal entities are going to come forward because they are, they're being pushed to penalize from lack of income, all, every city in the United States, every municipality is being affected financially, and, in my opinion, we're, we're kicking the can down the road for work that needs to be done, but the, trying to get people to understand right now, today, what's going to happen and the value that it's going to do, and protect their investment locally, and guarantee a better quality of water, and a better, everything that we're doing is a very delicate situation right now, that, that's all I'm saying, because I promise you, every municipality that come forward with a budget shortfall, luckily, we haven't shown any budget shortfall yet, we've been very, very fortunate and lucky, but other cities cannot say that.
Right, one of the things that, uh, just thinking about the projects that, that are pending, I, I think, uh, Mr. Houston had a point on, but the concern is, uh, get, getting the, the rebuilt project, like the clarifier, we, I know that we have some funds to, to get the engineering part of it, but then...
But then the cost of repairing it and rehabilitating the whole clarifier itself is costly. I don't know if we have the funds available for that.
Yeah, for the water infrastructure, the capital that we're still working on, so we presented at the next meeting, our water infrastructure request, which will get the clarifier built and, you know, the other related jobs. We're looking at a two, well, two million dollar request.
Any amount of million dollars.
Yes, they did.
Here's the main thing, the absolute main thing. Every presentation that the Water District made preparation of the bond. They went to the school board, every city, the Rotary Club, the Chamber of Commerce, the property owners who care, I was there at every one except one. And my feeling is all those presentations need to be remade. But right now, in this environment, you can't make them. You're not going to gather groups together to hear those presentations. And those presentations need to be made, remade again next spring. Very dollars, very, very.
Charles, what are the issues in delaying the project?
Oh, just time and, you know, just keeping us more at risk. I mean, I think the fact that we are, you know, full speed ahead on design for the clarifiers. We've added Clarifier B to the project. So, you know, we're looking at being ready to put that out for bid in October. We just got to get the capital budget for about, you know, one and a half million to approve construction.
Yeah.
So which I think is doable. So, you know, I mean, I think, I think.
And I think that's one of the things that I, that's the reason I asked the question because I know we have funds to move forward and still do some of these just piecemealed, if you will. So I know we can do that. But the other reason I raise this question is how does this affect, for instance, we've committed to doing the project on the island. There's a timeframe associated with it.
Yeah, I mean, again, the Little Boulevard, I guess that's part of, we can get, if we dive into the engineer support of that item, I mean, I would imagine that's a project impacted by the shortfalls of the city of South Park, New Orleans. So I would imagine.
But my point is, my point is, can we add, would be, if they, they're ready to move next summer, are we going to be able to move next summer with that improvement as well?
Well, without the authorization of the tax bond, we have to fund it as a revenue.
That's my question, can we do that?
I would think there's availability.
Yeah, I mean, that's one of many projects that we want to, we're looking to fund with revenue.
Because the way I see this is if we can do that, then essentially come next May, that's not going to be a $27 million tax bond anymore. It's going to be less. You know, so.
Like I would say, let's shift the bypass line to a revenue note so we can move on it. And the disjointed pipes could be, you know, put as a revenue request. I mean, you know, items like that to help accelerate some of that distribution.
Yeah, I do too. I do too, but we're putting ourselves in a position where, yeah, yeah. That we need to be able to act on a commitment we've already made. And I want to make sure that if we're not going to do it this way, that we can do it another way.
Yeah, I mean, going through the projects with the bond planning committee, there was a whole list of projects and some of them made it onto the tax bond project list. And some of them did not. And those, we were planning on funding with a future revenue bond, the ones that did not make the tax bond planning. So if we want to go back to square one, you know, re-prioritize those projects and figure out which ones are more urgent to do based on timing.
Projects that are being affected. I'm just referring to one, and that's the waterline improvement. At this point, but we also have talked about sewer line improvement.
Yeah, the sewer lines, it's going to be a new job that, you know, we haven't, I haven't even quantified that funding request. I guess that would be sewer infrastructure, a new request, but that's what we're working on to be ready to present at the next meeting. But yeah, that's, those are, there's items summarized in my engineer's report on the Little Boulevard. So that's a significant item. I mean, the sewer main is 10-inch, pretty much for the entire street. Gardena is the breakpoint, so Gardena flows south and then High Biscuits flows up to Morningside. But like coming off of Red Snapper, where everything from Gardena to Palm flows to, I mean, that's a 10-inch line that gets surcharged when at peak, during peak demand. And so, you know, with that surcharge condition, it causes backups and that's probably just going to become more and more common over time. So we got to be looking at upsizing, you know, that main. And then we're, from a modeling standpoint, we see that condition both coming off of Morningside and coming off of Red Snapper. So it's something to think about.
What happens if we lose the bond? And let's say we did the bond, we lose it. Is there a rule against doing it again in May?
You can have elections off as you want. About that, I mean, yeah. And then again, we can do. I just want to give you my personal opinion. We need to do the project, fall in motion, and keep going forward. But I personally don't believe we're going to die out of support. But you can put it on the ballot and hold it true for the best.
One of the things that we have already given a deposit for that, for the elections. Just keep that in mind. But again, the elections is for board members.
For board members as well.
It's a hard decision, but.
So what was the answer? Because the audio's bad to Dr. Lallan's question. If we hypothetically go forward, bond doesn't pass, what is the future of modifying it and making adjustments to present it again? What does that look like?
No, you can do it again.
You have, obviously wouldn't be the same, rewritten. Continue to move forward with projects and other sources of funding. So if the project will move forward, or parts of the projects will move forward. And you can rewrite the agenda item. They were handled for a month.
Yeah, I think the, I think the only, I think the main thing that you accomplish, if you do have the election in November, this November, is that you're going to get a very good read on public sentiment. And so if you decide to go in May again, you can use that to try to correct whatever the issues might be. My personal feeling is that raising taxes doesn't change anybody.
On Sunday, Monday. If this was February, it was a whole different conversation than February.
Right.
Compared to today. Current bleakness. With hope next February, we're able to go out and tell the public, sell the idea.
Yeah, yeah.
We're hands-on and we need to recognize the difficulty of passing this. Just to have it, just to use it, puts a bad face on the public if you want to try to bring it out. Oh, then they, what if they ask them for another one in November? What happened to that one? It gets diluted.
I think without.
Having one in May and plan on the COVID situation somewhat.
Yeah, vaccines in place.
Go out, go to the public, do what we need to do, sell it.
Good job with it already, Herb. Don't you feel like you guys already went, you already did it, you already talked to everybody? It's not like they forgot everything you said.
They forgot.
No, no. No, I think, I think that, no, to Mr. Lallan's point, yes, I think we have done as good a job as we can do to try to educate the public. The question here is really not one of whether we can do a better job of selling it, which we could always try to do that. The question is, at what point is a good time to raise taxes on all the people that we're servicing?
Never. And at the end, at the end, at the end of the day, we're not the ones that make the decision in November. The community's going to.
Right.
And we can sit here and talk about politics and fear and what's the right thing to do, but it's in their hands. Great effort has been made to educate our community on the needs that we have laid out. We have brought important members that represent the island, Port Isabel, Laguna Vista, into a committee. They've met numerous times. The more I think about this, let them, let our community decide in November. We don't need to sell anything to them. They're educated individuals, they're capable of making this decision. And then we'll rest with whatever they decide.
It was nice to have the community input in form of the issue. They really never got out.
Can't hear a word Herb's saying, but I'd like to.
Anyway, there's a, there's a motion and a second. I follow the question. A motion was made by Mr. Houston to defer the election until May of 2021. All in favor, opposed?
I oppose.
I oppose.
Mr. Avalos opposes, Mr. Sarkis opposes, Dr. Lallan opposes. Opposes, I guess. Call again, is that correct?
I make a motion, we move forward with our bond election in November.
Motion made by Mr. Sarkis.
Second.
To move forward with the election in November of 2020. The second made by Mr. Avalos. Election in November of 2020, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Sarkis in favor. Dr. Lallan?
Aye.
I'm going to go to the record. For the record, we have a motion, we have an election.
Tough decision, but it's made.
I just would like to say real quick to just, you know, I respect your opinion on it, Herb. And it carries a lot of weight. You've been through a lot of elections. And if there was, you know, if this was a one and done, we could never do it again, then I think I would probably come down more on the delaying it. But the fact that, you know, we can push it again next May or next November if we wanted to get more space between it and try again, it makes me feel like, hey, let's, let's let your efforts that you've put in speak for themselves and see where it takes us and try again if it doesn't work.
For the record, I will favor the motion. Okay, let's move along, let's jump back to item four.
Good evening once again. The district is in really good shape. Staff has worked really hard to get to this point. And Grand Access will continue to reach out to our community to help them realize how many programs and projects and what it takes to run a great water, superior water district. Let me not forget superior, because that's really important. We're blessed to have great staff that work very hard for our community and it's important that the customers know that. At this point, I'll turn it over to my better half, she'll take it.
Okay, so we're going to give a quick update on the social media and some scheduled PR activities prior to the bond collection. Okay, so this is the last 28 days on Facebook. So we had page views, increased page views of 80. We had 18 more page likes. We had a post reach of 1,599 and I'll go over that, why that's so high. Post engagement of 520 people. Videos, 37, likes, page followers, 18 new. And that's just the last 28 days. Okay, so this is showing our audience insights. And this is from February, the rest of the information is going to be February to present. So it just shows demographics, 60% of our followers are women, 40 are men. And there's a, we even have some in the Philippines and Mexico, which is interesting. Yeah, there's 15 in Mexico, one in the Philippines, one in Honduras. Yeah, perhaps. Maybe they're from there originally. Okay, this one here shows our page followers currently. We have 812, which is an increase from March. There were about barely 600 when we did the last report. And it just shows kind of our followers and then there's some, it doesn't distinguish, there's some dips and that's the fate of like. So there's maybe one, a couple of times there, four times in the last month. But overall, it's been positive. And then where the page follows happen, which is whether it was from New York, from our website, or pages, suggestions, or search. We did, there's a big spike, if you see, in July. And that is a, that is a, an ad that was run. And so we gained, that's where we gained probably those 18 extra followers from the last 28 days. Okay, this one here is post views and kind of varies. But we have, we had an increase in July and August. Again, because of, especially in August, we had a spike. We recently did a post about the hours and, but we did it as, we ran it as an ad as well. So we reached about 1,500 more people that way. So I think it was worth it, sort of like $8. And if you look at the next one, these are likes. And again, it just depends, we're looking, a lot of the ones that they like tend to be with pictures of employees. And we tried to include that, like for the Fourth of July. If you see that spike over here in July 4th, it was a video and actually we posted it as a picture along with other pictures of the truck with the flag on it, the United States flag and other pictures. And that received about 2,600 likes. It reached, it reached a lot more people that way. And the next one, a number of page likes. So this actually shows when our followers are online. So if you see the, the kind of like the hump there is that the highest point is from 6:00 AM to 8:00, 8:00 AM, so 8:00 PM. So they're kind of on it all day. And this is the 812 followers that we're talking about here. Okay, the next one is post reach. And you see the light orange is the organic, which is just by posting people that saw that page. The dark orange is when we did it as an ad. And so we reached a whole lot more that way. And so that helps occasionally to do. Again, that big spike in July was pretty awesome. The next one is reached by post type. And as you can imagine, the photo, photos get roughly 456 reaches or a video is 119 and if you just put a link, it's maybe 90. So the photographs is really what brings people to look at it and then to engage. There's about 70 compared to 19 and 30 the other way. So that's what we try to do, put as many photographs as possible. Now Instagram and Twitter, we've had a slow start. They're, it's a whole different age group, which we're still trying to, to reach. Instagram right now has about 86 followers and we follow nine, which are any things that have to do with the water smart. And Twitter as well. Twitter, we have four followers, which is nothing. So we're working on that and then 20 following. So what we have following is maybe state of. So what we have following is maybe State of Water, it's a nonprofit organization, things that will bring information, other organizations that we link to, to kind of get information on water and water issues, and also community issues. So the goal there is to increase visibility by utilizing hashtags that connect to organizations and use that's relevant. So we're going to try to get more followers on there. Follow more that have relevant information to those who read our posts. So what comes next? Increase presence on Twitter, Instagram, Facebook by 18 hashtags. Increase social media presence by reposting bond information and videos, which we have planned. Begin distributing bond flyer again. And contact local organizations to update on bond election information. I reached out to Long Island Village today to see if they're even meeting. And they said they're currently not, but they do send information to their, to their members. Sure, go ahead. Okay, so so I reached out to Long Island Village, and they're not currently meeting, but they do send out information, which I left a message with their manager, general manager, so we can get in contact with them to see what it is that we can do to reach out to those, because they're not really year-round in that area. They tend to leave and come back. That way, we can inform those who are here now that will be voting in November in that location. I also reached out to the South Padre Allen Chamber of Commerce, and they don't have a meeting planned right now, but they have been sharing our bond flyer in their newsletter every Friday. And so they will be sending that to me to, so we can review and see if we want to share any additional information that may come different and updated. So we're going to be reviewing that as soon as I receive it. Okay, so set scheduled activity. This is tentative, because I do need to, we do need to work with Mr. Balaban and the team to see what else we can do. So this is just basic. August 12th, of course, our board meeting today. August 17th, we'll be posting on social media, the three social media sites, the first video, and getting that pumped in. On August 19th, submit article for press. So we're going to start releasing press articles every other week starting this month. So it'll come out on August 21st. August 26th is another board meeting, then September 9th, a board meeting. And then also, we will be submitting an article for the press for that Friday. September 15th, we'll be posting video two. September 23rd, board meeting and submit article for press for the, to come out on the 25th. Sorry, you and I are doing it?
Yeah.
Okay, there. So then October, since October, we are going to really ramp it up more. We're putting, submitting articles weekly. And this is just basic, so this is the starting point. And we will work with Mr. Balaban, see if we need to be doing more as far as articles, and we will certainly do that. Submit article to the press for the 9th, board meeting, and the 14th. The 15th of October, we'll be posting video number three. And the 21st, submit article to press, come out that Friday. I believe that is when the early voting begins. We're estimating probably about two weeks before. It's not posted yet, but it's usually two weeks before election day. And then, again, board meeting and submit another article on the 30th and election day on the 3rd. And again, this is not including any information we can share with our organizations. That's something that we're going to work on and include in the activity schedule. So I know that the cities are meeting, at least on Zoom or live, Facebook Live. So that is a possibility that we can give them information or present information. And the Rotary is also meeting on Zoom. I'm a member, so I am familiar with that. So that's a possibility there, too. So do you all have any questions as of now?
Early voting, you said, is about the 20th of October?
It's probably two weeks ago, about the 20th.
From 19th or 20th?
Yeah, it usually starts, I think, Monday.
On Mondays?
Probably around the 19th, rest of the year. Again, it's not posted yet, so as soon as we do, we'll update it.
Of course, these dates are tentative, so we will be open for any kind of changes that we, that the district may have. We also have a, the first article would probably be about proposal and what we have, and just to inform the public. One right before the election date would probably be a more relatable article. So we've got a tactic that we will utilize to, you know, we get this one. Any questions?
I need one for your time. Make sure to end Water Smart on there.
Absolutely. Sure.
Yes, on the Water Smart? Yeah, good idea, behind Victor, I'm sorry, Victor. And I, we were together and came up with the idea of getting out of a barbecue pit and purchased it together, small one, not a big one, just a small one, for the Water Smart applicants. And also, they can, we're going to give them some more time, so they can, the ones that haven't applied for that, or the app, they can do so, maybe by
You want to come up with six dates? Along with, that'll coincide with this.
It doesn't say what you do on Thursday. Whatever we keep promoting, I know we're doing it. I know we're getting out there, but it just can't seem to get on. What feature it is?
Oh, it's a great feature. It saved me quite a bit of money personally at my house. I had a weekend, I didn't know about it, and it rang on my phone, so.
Everybody that has mentioned it, or every time it's come up, everybody's so happy to get the alerts. I thought we were doing pretty good with that.
We'll push that issue a little bit and get some people to answer it.
Then we'll, that's a good plan. I just wanted to mention that.
I'm going along with item seven. Discussing, discussing the change of board policy and board director selection. I mean, we will remember Water District, it's always been a difficult one.
Just for our stuff, right?
Yes, this is Water District.
And you see all the information that I provided for you all. And it just mentions everything for the elections. So all we need to do is, and everything's are, been looked at. Where is it? This is a word, we have to go ahead and, and we'll get it signed up.
There's a big problem with this. This is going to be a big turnout, a big turnout. We're going to have people on the Luna Vista, vote early. We have people on the island, voting early. Other camps also, we are, we are, especially bonds, to, to polish. So we go through this, there are times that it needs to be equal voting, time, location. Because a quarter is hungry, very several places to vote, two places at a time. That's a big, big problem.
We have a meeting tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
Afternoon? Go ahead and address the issues and make sure that. We had talked about it in the beginning.
You guys are voting.
Mentioned like, they would need a lot of.
Board member and they're voting. Item number, and are two very important items. And they need to vote, be able to early vote.
For both of them.
Both of them, at the same time in all locations.
Yes, we'll read it up again tomorrow before.
So as far as local elections, are you referring? I mean, wouldn't we be on the early voting ballot for the county election, just the same as the election day?
No, this is, if I'm reading this correctly, you can only early vote at Water District, and you can't vote on Super Tuesday at all of these locations. Early voting for Water District is only at the district, if I'm reading this correctly.
It should be, the, what, we were trained as a.
Because it says, these are the only voting. These are the only.
It is everywhere. You can vote for the early voting anywhere.
Yeah, they should have our ballot at the early voting locations as well.
At each of these locations.
Yes.
That says right here, these are early voting sites and hours.
Yes, I don't think ours.
But these are proposed for election day sites, for election day sites as well. So it's early voting sites and hours that are going to be proposed in the election day site.
When you give them your ID, they look you up, and they look at what jurisdictions you're voting for, and then they go and they pull those ballots for you.
Reaches me like.
And give you those. So they should, it should be, in addition to the national ballots and all those, they should also pull a ballot.
See, on election day, number 322, that was 183,520. Each of the above polling places shall, on election day, be open seven to seven. Early voting locations, based on the above, doesn't make much, shall be held at these sites, but on the day.
Yeah, you're right, that's not what it says.
Yeah, we need to make sure that that is the case.
Exhibit A is page three.
That exhibit A is the same thing for, same date for the bond election as well. That's what we need.
We can't leave it up to the county. I mean, this is.
But we already requested that we want to have people being able to vote in supportive of the, and that stuff, that's in the works, but it just hasn't been approved, right?
The norm, though, in early voting is that you can vote anywhere in the county. You can vote anywhere in the county in early voting.
But is our proposal going to be available at all these sites?
I'm sorry?
Is our proposal going to be available at all these sites?
It should be.
I know it should be. That's what I'm, that's what I want to make sure.
Yes, and then at the last page, it lists the recent 183, 52, 59, 67.
Well, you got a meeting coming up with them tomorrow, you say? You got a meeting coming up with them tomorrow? Yeah, just let Scott know what the end result of that is.
I see what you're saying, yes.
And I guess you can go back tomorrow and get signed up.
Making sure, don't trust your county to clear this up.
Well, we're going to clear it up. We're going to, they got a meeting tomorrow.
We're hiring the county. If it costs money, we have to pay it. We have to be able to take early vote from all three of these counties at their city halls.
Yeah.
No exception.
That's what we need. Yeah.
Okay. Okay, we'll go. We just approve this and get it signed up until we make sure they don't give us some writing, like.
Approve of what they hide there, it doesn't matter. There's other stuff, that's the problem.
Well, we, here's the, what I'm hearing is, staff is saying it's not done.
With the county.
With the county, because they got to.
In term.
Yeah, because it's going to be, there's a meeting tomorrow. Right, right. So.
If we're paying, if we're paying for them to administrate, I don't vote. We can say we want here, here, here. We want access at all locations.
That's for early voting.
For early votes, yeah.
On and board.
There's also a deadline for this order.
August 21st.
Yeah, we still have time. Unless you get it approved to be and get it signed up.
I would, I would make a motion to approve it subject to.
Subject to label.
Right. I'll second that.
Aye.
I'm here.
Motion made by Mr. Houston, second by Mr. Allois. All of those are in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All are in favor, then both of them are in favor.
Thank you.
For the items, item eight, the rest of operations report. This is really a big deal.
Yes, it is. We've had that issue before.
We've had it before.
That's why we emphasize. Need to emphasize it at the last. Mean that we wanted that?
Just a, just as a.
We'll make sure.
Just as a. Just as a. Just as a follow-up, there's a meeting tomorrow, right, Mr. Garban?
Yes, sir.
If there is, if there is any indication that that's not going to happen, then we need to call for a special meeting on the 21st, to straighten this out. Right, we need to call it, though, probably on Friday. We need to call it on Friday, for our 21st meeting. So just in case it seems like they're not going to accommodate us for that.
They have pretty much indicated to have this. As a matter of fact, the last election where they left Luna Vista out, we talked to them about that, and they came back and went ahead and included it this time. Yes.
Okay, thank you, Brian.
The Director of Operations report for the month of July, comparing it with July of last year, we had a total of about 79 call-outs less than last year. Last year, we had 296, this year, we had 217. And most of them were informational and work on the meter box. That dropped by 37. We also had the change meters that decreased for this year, and coal meters. We didn't have to pull as many meters as we did last year. And that's on the distribution side. On the collection side, there were 17 less calls this year than last year. And most of them were on the preventive maintenance side. We had 39 preventive maintenance last July. And this July, we had 10, we did 10. I do apologize for the pre-treatment and lift station report. I had done this report and I forwarded to Daisy. What I didn't realize at the time that I sent it to her is that the the cutoff or the page cutoff on the report did not include the lift station. So when she finished it, that's why it's not shown here. Although I had done the report, so I'd like to go ahead and just give it to you verbally. As far as the lift station personnel, they contacted one new food service establishment. And they contacted eight existing food service establishments during the month of July. They did five inspections on grease traps or grease interceptors. They did one recommendation on the size of the grease tap that this new establishment needed. They had eight maintenance, the Microsoft calls on the lift stations. And some of that included also working on the fence that surrounds the the lift stations as well as cutting grass that that is around the lift station. They troubleshooted three pumps, DC pumps. They had to pull them out. They get rags or mop heads stuck in the infiller in the in the pump, and so it quits working, so they have to pull it out and do maintenance on it. And that takes considerable time in doing that. They had nine electrical issues where they had to call the electricians to go out there and service the the pumps. And they did twenty valve removals from the lift station wells is possible. And so that totaled out to sixty-nine calls that they did. Any questions? That concludes my report, gentlemen. Thank you very much.
All right, the first item we have is the Laguna Boulevard project with South Padre Island. Just to kind of give you an update, first, there's the pavement and drainage side. Alex Sanchez, their engineer over at the island, he had sent us the their draft set of plans for the Mary set. So back on June twenty-fourth, we were able to use, you know, their, we'll have access to their CAD files and their plans to help us kind of sort of dig it back off of their set for any utility needs that that we have. And so I just ended up showing their cover sheets and typical sections in the in the board tactic. Just to get an idea of the limited project, you know, we're talking from the south end of Palm of Timor side. We're length of two point one one miles. And so I just, there's just the various typical sections in here. We're pretty much, we have the ten inch sewer line all the way through the middle of the road. And then there's, you know, the two inch water line on the left, the sporadic locations, the twelve inch main runs for most of the, most of the length. And so basically, you know, we do have a lot of, you know, sections that are in need of repair on the two inch side. I don't know if you want us to expand a little bit on that as far as issues there. That there's not an exact date.
They're waiting on a grant approval, I think, by the end of September, they should know. If they're going to get the grant, otherwise. To, I anticipate they're going to wait for twenty twenty-two to, for a rollover of a note that's going to come up. And we use those months. Otherwise, if they get the grant, they'll get started probably soon. Yes. Yeah, no, I, believe me, I, I, I know that feeling. I already, I put in about three hundred dollars in repairs on my front end already.
And we should probably get our stuff going here in there.
Yeah, just to add to what Charles was saying on Laguna. One of the sections is from West Farm to West Stanford Jack, which is more familiar. This is where I, that's just the spaghetti area, a lot of the cost and crisscross and interconnected that. It's just problematic. So that's one of the areas that needs to be addressed sooner than later. It's not that Charles was talking about. And normally, like, yeah, we had two inches leap. Normally, we knock it off pretty quick, but we had to step down the twelve inch main just to do the spark party. And the U nine, and then there's other areas further north that would also help with pressure and mudding of this. That's where you're at.
Right.
So all in all, it would also help with the circulation of water. Help with the sample that the water pipe collects with the monthly support, so back teeth and whatnot. So I mean, it's just small portion of what Charles is trying to point out, but overall, it would be a great, a huge improvement on the water.
Yeah, I mean, just, yeah, pretty much, there's, there's more to this estimate that we haven't determined yet. In addition to what's requested the bond report on the end of November election. So I mean, to cover the additional, like, two inch repairs, I mean, we should set aside some of that in our capital budget to get it covered. But and then also there's the sewer side, you know, in addition that, you know, we might need to analyze and think if it's the right time to be upgrading some of those mains in the in the center of the road that are undersized. So that, that's another aspect of the project. I mean, for modeling, you know, where we're predicting that they're undersized, and it's a matter of the, just get more silver time.
Biggest issue is getting the monies to do that all at the same time. That that's going to be you know, because we had originally, this whole thing was just about a water replacement, right? But now we're looking at a little bit more, so I want to make sure that you guys get together with finance and make sure that we have the money to do that.
Right, like, I don't know if you flipped, yeah, on the sewer side, I don't know if you flipped over to this page, the one that, I don't know which page it's at. Basically, a kind of a graphical presentation showing this project GL five and GL seven on the island. Yeah, it's quite a bit. You can just kind of flip down through the pages there. I left some excerpts on the model description if you want to read that on your own time. You know, just to save some time here for this meeting. We can keep it up and down. And yeah, pretty much, I mean, the, you know, the sewer line that that we're thinking is a pretty good section coming up, coming off of Red Stanford. With that estimate being on the range of four hundred twenty-six thousand. And then even though coming off of Morning Side, Laguna Boulevard, it's just one section. We really need to look at Morning Side all the way to Gulf Boulevard, Gulf Boulevard up to Sunset. And then so, you know, that's really kind of that whole project. We're looking at a, you know, a one point three million dollar sewer upgrade in that section. So that's the kind of dollars we're talking about if we're going to start first.
Well, I think the issue being that we're going to beat, the ground has to be torn up to do this.
Right.
So the ideal time to do it is when the city's doing that replacement of that road. If we can make the numbers work, then we should consider doing it.
Right, so it's, it's just, you know, just let you know.
We have that savings of not having to pay for the paving.
Right, right. And also, especially if we can start getting this bypass line in place, restoring those valves that are permanently broken closed in front of the A P substation. Once that's, once that's in place, we can rerun our telos data, recalibrate the system and check what we need to be doing. You know, it's some kind of some more confidence on how we're going to keep the end voting. So that's, that's the other aspect, you know, we'll be thinking about. And so, yeah, I guess that concludes the Boulevard description. The next one's in Port Isabel, the Tarpon Street and Island Avenue. Cornet construction is already finished. The city had some delays on the paving side. Their initial contractor, he walked off the job. They rebid it and then they rejected bids. And so we're at the point of the paving really not getting done until next fiscal year. But we're looking at also just making final payment to the contractor and well, well, the city of Port Isabel. Yes, so. Yeah, well, we are projects final. I mean, we, the final invoice is attached here with my notes. Yeah, so basically, the city still hasn't awarded the paving contract. And I think we've dressed up the collegiate as much as what's reasonable, the responsible in our end. Yeah, and so really, I mean, kind of the the condition is we're going to, we still, you know, made an obligation to reimburse them eighty-five thousand, which we'll have to carry forward to next year for paving patchwork, like our contribution to the job. And then essentially, at this point, any additional collegiate repair would be a public work responsibility. And I mean, that's kind of how, how the best way to conclude the job. You know, so just kind of bringing that, bringing that to your attention. You know, they, they just stay within the contract amount. Once you, once you add the reimbursement to the city, I mean, I think since we did have paving in their original bid, we're only looking at, you know, about fifteen hundred bucks over the cornet contract to cover the city's fees plus to feed all this work. So that came out pretty well.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess, plus, if there's any other questions there, that's.
But we're, we're, essentially, we're done.
Yes.
On carpet. Okay. I know, I just, the reason I say that is because there is a little bit of pushback going on from some of the residents there. And we're getting the blame. Yeah, I know, but we're getting the blame for this.
Yeah, their, their second rebid was, was July thirty-first, and then at that Tuesday morning with the city, they rejected it. So it's, it's going to go perfectly again.
Okay.
Governor, this order is, is just to call for the the hearing. The hearing will take place at the next, right before the next regularly scheduled meeting. I've already calculated the, the, the tax rate. That's going to go out and be published in the, in the newspaper this week. It's supposed to be advertised for ten days before the, the, the hearing. So that will fulfill that, that requirement. On a preview, the rate, the rate was three point eight eight cents in current year, and it's going to go up to three point nine nine cents.
We're still under four pennies.
That's right. And the cause of that is, is just a drop in the property values. So last year, we had an increase in the values. This year, we had a decrease. So we're basically right at where we were two years ago with the values.
Get a motion on this? I'll move to approve.
Hi.
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 I'll move to approve.
Second.
Second by Mr. Starkey, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Acknowledged. Second.
No, that's fine. We just have to, we need to get it out of the way.
I'd really like to do whatever goes here on the previous occasion.
I can be there on the twenty-sixth.
Well, we'll wait till the twenty-sixth.
I personally like whatever goes here. That's how I like it.
Okay.
I just think everyone needs to be here and it's all, all hands on deck.
Some motion.
Second.
So I'm also in a second. I used to lose off table. Why actually about four forty? Why actually about fifteen? Six fifty-two P M. Well, thank you all for being here tonight. Thanks for your time. We're with Water District.